Start again, good evening, welcome to the workshop. In the last 24 hours, we've had a tragic event in central New York and we'd like to honor Officer Jensen and Lieutenant Busick and say a solid prayer for their families. So we'll choose a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'll arise and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, tonight, most of the board is wearing red as a shout-out to our favorite Hollywood star, our newest favorite Hollywood star, Ryan Gosling. So Ryan, we want to congratulate you on your choice of clothing, or maybe your stylist's choice of clothing. And just remind you, I know on your Saturday Night Live skit, you said you're trying to say goodbye to Ken, but we might suggest that red could be the new pink for you. So, thank you, Ryan, for the shout-out. Okay, with that, we'll continue our work session. And Joe, you want to move us along?
Sure. We're gonna start this evening, we're excited to have Dr. Matthew Cook, the OCM Bosse's District Superintendent here this evening to give the board an opportunity to ask questions and to provide a quick update regarding our partnership with OCM Bosse's and the services that can be received through OCM. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cook.
Which button do I?
The right one.
Yeah, so I appreciate being here. It's, you know, something I've been doing the last few years is being able to come to the ballroom floorboard and talk a little bit about the partnership that we have with your district. I think, you know, the place for me to start probably is just to say thanks. This is a dynamic and very positive relationship, I think, between OCM Bosse's and the Beville district. And Bosse's does not exist without our component districts, right? We're an organization that by definition is a service organization. So, we try to pick up the slack where there's need. And we are always trying to find the right balance between responding to district needs, but then also trying to find what's the latest, right? In whichever area we're talking about. And then trying to help be leaders within the region, so we try to figure out how to make things work better for everyone. And so, that way, we get the widest range of services to students as possible. This ultimately, that's what this is all about. So, if we could, what I figured is a good, jumping off, is to sort of walk you through what we call a snapshot of services. And I'm not gonna read every word on the page to you, but I'm just gonna hit some highlights, make sure that we go over what we think of as the main divisions within Bosse's and the main places at which we provide services to our component districts. And if at any point along the line you have questions, please feel free to jump in and we'll leave some time also for questions if you have them. I'm now going to acknowledge my advancing age by putting those on. But, you know, probably one of the places to start is to point out some of the numbers on the front cover, right? So the Beville's share of our administrative budget, which you'll be voting on in April, is about $234,000. Through cooperative purchasing, you get almost all of that back, right? And so just by buying a lot of hot dogs and basketballs for the whole region, we wind up saving our component districts quite a bit of money. I think over $2.1 million total, and Beville's share of that is about $209,000. Your contracting with us is about 6.9% of your current budget. And the aid that you receive back by using Bosse's services is about $3.7 million. So it's fairly substantial cost savings for the district. I just want to point out one other thing on the front cover before we move into the content. You're gonna vote on the administrative portion of the budget in April. The rest of our services, you vote with your feet, right? So if there's a service that you want, you subscribe to it, and if there's a service that you don't want, you don't have to buy into it. So it's important for people to understand that there's a tremendous amount of choice that our districts have with the services that you get to select on. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and that's, I think, one of the real strengths of Bosse's in general, but what we hope is a relationship we have with all of our component districts. So if you open up your snapshot, all the way on the left, we'll start with instructional support services. So that's the side of the house that most people associate with things like professional development. So whether they're networks, like these principals' networks, or VCIC, which I believe Renee is part of, there's all kinds of different learning opportunities that happen regularly through there. But then we also provide a tremendous amount of different kinds of services along the professional development line. This summer, we're hosting a couple of pretty large programs. One of them is PBL, Project-Based Learning Program, and another is our DEI initiative, our DEI Summit. So, we're always looking for new ways to try to have the region be able to learn together, because I think there's a lot of power in people learning together, not just individually. They're trying to figure things out on their own. So it's that conversation and the dialogue that happens when people are working together. It's helpful. I'll just point out a couple of pieces on here, so you understand how the key works. Everything that is in bold blue is a service that probably is available to subscribe to. The things that are not are things that, like I said, you voted and you treat, and you decided that you either don't need that or don't need that at this time. So I'll just point out two things on this list, right? Esports in the first level, we've seen a tremendous uptick in that world over the last few years. And I'll admit, when I was superintendent in a component district and esports came around several years ago, my first reaction was, I don't know if this is a good idea, right? Do we want to encourage kids to spend more time on computers? You know, that was my initial thing. I also had a son at the time who played a fair number of computer games, and so I had a little bit of bias, right? And then he pointed out to me, as he often did, that he was winding up spending more time with his friends than my daughters were spending with their friends, because he was engaged with them most every night for several hours. He's now in his mid-20s, and there are people that he met through esports that he is still connected to, living in other states, that he would not have known otherwise. But the thing that convinced me probably the most, when I was superintendent in a component district before coming to Bosse's, was we had kids who were withdrawn from school, didn't pay attention to school spirit activities, and when they joined the esports team, they started wearing things like Beville coat, right? So they started, for the first time, feeling connected and having a positive experience in that way. So I think the growth in that area has been tremendous, and we're very fortunate in this region. Elite Gaming has been a great partner with us, and I think that you're gonna see even more in that area. And more ways for kids to connect, more ways for kids to feel valued and connected, that's a good thing. So moving into the middle part of that page, we're gonna just spotlight a couple of pieces around the Student Services Act. Student Services is the part of the house that most people think of what they think of Bosse's, right? So this is, these are the Career and Technical Education Programs, and Special Education Programs, and the Innovative Tech Programs that we are probably best known for. We are constantly trying to find new ways to offer different kinds of programs, especially in the career and tech world. Our registration in career and tech programming has gone up 33% in the last five years. The pendulum always swings in education, right? So a while ago, it was to the point where everybody was having conversations around the fact that everybody needed to go to college, sort of almost no matter what, right? The pendulum has swung so far the other way that I found myself talking to some parents a few months ago, and I said this sentence, you know, college isn't so bad. So, I mean, I think that's an indication that we, as a society, are valuing the trades more than ever. I definitely think that with Micron coming and all of the ancillary supply chain businesses that are coming with it, we've certainly seen an uptick in a desire to head in that direction. So we're actually starting a new program in Corlent this next year that will evolve sort of advanced manufacturing in the semiconductor kind of world. We'll be looking for partners to see if we can advance a program similar to that as we move into this county. We always try to offer programs in both of our locations that are comparable to each other, but usually you have to start one first, so in one location first, so we're getting that off the ground. But that, I'll just point out that firefighting and emergency tech EMT program, that's in its first year. It's been a great experience for us. We wanted to be able to offer that in all three of our counties, Anadaga, Corlent, and Madison Counties. But we've also learned along the way that there's a lot of work to do to get a program like that set up, and we also need willing partners. So, there's sort of an agreement that we'll start at Madison County first, because they were sort of ready to go, and the other counties were sort of wanting to see how it turned out. It's gone so well that we've actually partnered with Madison Oneida Bosse's, and so we're gonna have, it's one of the first partnerships that I know of between two different Bosse's running the program, to make sure that we have more access for kids to be able to get into that program, since technically it's run by us, but it's situated in Madison County's county seat, which is in the Madison Oneida Bosse's region. So, we had some lot of conversations back and forth about how to make that happen, but also to offer more opportunities for kids. So, just wanted to point that out. Then the other thing that I'll point out on the next sheet, we have OCM Bosse's student success story, which we try to include every time. And we have one of your students, Emma there, who is part of the skate program that is sort of, oh, sorry, the team program that is here in Beville. So one of the things that I wanted to point out about that, and again, just to thank Beville for the partnership, we are working very hard to have as many of our special education programs as possible located in component districts, because we think that that's better for students, right? So before I was a superintendent, I was a special education director. The more you can integrate programs and have kids who are in those programs be able to participate alongside their non-disabled peers, I think it's really enriching for everyone involved. So, we appreciate that partnership, we appreciate your hosting some of our programs. It works out great. I think we're up to 39 classrooms across the region in different component districts. I will say this, because I don't want to make it all sound like sunshine of roses. We're struggling right now with teachers and being able to hire as many teachers as we need for programs. For the first time in our history, that anybody can remember, we've had to say no to requests opening classrooms, because we're not able to fully staff them. So the teacher shortage is hitting, and it's a challenge. So we're working through it, but we're also trying to be as open and honest as we can be about some of our challenges. We hate having a waiting list, we hate having to say no, but I also can't ethically open a classroom when I know I'm gonna start it with a teacher assistant and not a teacher in the room. That's just not fair to the kids, and it's not fair to the educational structure. So, we're doing everything we can to hire, but I'd like the rest of you, but it is a challenge out there. So shifting over to the, again, that page on the right, the upper part of that page is the Business and Management Services Program. So, I just wanted to highlight a few things on there. You see in, highlighted in yellow are the services that Beville contracts with from Bosse's. You'll see that there's a couple that you don't, right? So Affordable Care, tracked, and recorded, you must have your own internal system here to be able to do that, that's not a problem. If you ever want to buy into that service later, you certainly can. You also do not participate in the central business office. I'll just say, that's not at all unexpected, right? This is a school district the size of Balden'sville, that's not really what the CEO is designed for. The CEO is designed for, hey, we don't really need a full-time treasurer, because we're a smaller district, or we don't really need a full-time payroll clerk, but we'd like to have, you know, two-thirds of them, so can we find a share of another district? That's really what that's designed for. So the smaller schools take advantage of that. And then I'll just flip it over to the back, and last, but we always say, certainly not least, is the City Director, Regional Information Center. So, there are 37 Bosse's in New York State. There are 12 regional information centers, and OCM Bosse's houses one of the regional information centers, and that's the City Director. What does a regional information center do? It's, the best way for you to think about it is sort of the backbone for all of the technology services that are provided to districts. So the fact that your network hasn't gone down, I hate saying it out loud, because I always feel like I'm about to get the network going down, chasing it, but our network has been up over 99% of the time over the last several years, and the only reason it's been down is when we've had to take it down for a little bit longer. So, the other thing that we're incredibly proud of is how hard that team works on stating off cyber attacks. We are regularly attacked. It is not a surprise that most of the attacks come from Russia and China, but they come from all over the world, and sometimes even the US, and we have not had one get through. Again, I hate saying it out loud, because I always feel like I'm about to jinx it, but that team does incredibly good work to try to make sure that you don't notice your technology, right? That's what we're striving for, because if you're not noticing it, that means it's working. So, a tremendous amount of work goes into there. But then you also provide a lot of different services from the City Director, so I'm just gonna point out one, the Finus too, right? That's one of those services that helps you, as a district, get a read on how your students are doing. A lot of efforts focused on social emotional learning right now, the Finus is a way for you to be able to dip in and get a sense of how kids are functioning, what their needs are. Tremendous amount of work goes into that, and a lot of good resources come from that, and the ability to point your resources in the directions that you need to be able to make sure your kids are doing well. So, again, I could try to answer any questions about any of those specifics. If you want to press on to Superintendent, I'm sure you'd be successful on some of them, but I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have.
So, Dr. Cook, thank you again for coming, and I think Carrie's talked just about Finus. We've had really good experiences with Finus, so that's a good choice, we appreciate that. Also, we just want to highlight, I know that one of our students last year, Brian Jaeger, in the AutoTech program went to the national finals, I believe it was Atlanta, Georgia, but through your program.
Sure.
Thank you. Says a lot about the program.
That's Skills USA. This year, Skills USA is actually gonna be on Great Week. So if you have a chance to be over to the fairgrounds, and if you want to see some of your students participating, I'm sure Dr. Barbara will be able to help you with that, but it's a great experience.
Just, not really a question, but I just wanted to say that this is really impressive. I'm glad to see how robust Bosse's programs are. And just wanted to ask our group, I know we've had the students with the seal of illiteracy be recognized at our meeting, and I think it would be great if, when we have students with the seal of civic readiness, if we did that as well. And in terms of staff recognition, I know, I know you're really active in one of the groups. I know Chris Denton is the chair of the principals' group, so I just want to offer that I think we ought to maybe recognize that leadership that we're providing, not just in our school district, but across the county.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I appreciate the opportunity, and like I said, it's mostly important for me to just be able to be here and thank you, because like I said at the start, we don't exist without the component districts, and we're always trying to figure out how to make sure we tweak our services to be responsive to local community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we will transition to our district data report card, a portion of our workshops this evening. And I checked in over to Kiana, who really is the guru behind all of our reporting, is able to put together what you see on our website, and what our community is able to witness because of her efforts. So with that, Kiana.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Tonight's presentation, I will say, the format of it is kind of mimicked after those databites that we talked about a little bit at the last workshop. So I hope that this format works for everyone. I'm always interested to hear feedback on what works best for you, because obviously I live and breathe this stuff all day, so it's good for me to hear different perspectives. And as we know, our strategic plan this year and for the next four years focuses on build, educate, and empower. So we've really taken the initiative to make sure that the different things that we have going on in the district are aligned with our strategic plan. And what I find most helpful is to just start with the statement that the Balden'sville community is committed to providing equitable and diverse learning experiences that educate and empower students, allowing each individual to thrive. Without the word, this is our vision statement in front of it, I think that it just has a really powerful meaning behind it, knowing that this year, we're focusing on those three priorities that you see: increasing school safety and security, exemplifying cultural responsiveness, diversity and equity, and providing project-based learning experiences. At our last meeting, we certainly mentioned the range of all 10 priorities that our strategic planning committee had initially identified, but we knew that we needed to really focus that in, and we ranked, or our community ranked, the different priorities to determine those three. So, those have really driven our goals for this school year, and tonight's presentation is organized in a way that follows our success planning guide, which you have seen. You've seen it in our building presentations, where both the secondary principals and elementary principals presented to you. But I think at that point, so early on in the school year, a lot of questions were about the measures. So how are we going to measure and make sure that we're attaining these, you know, goals that we have and meeting the objectives that we've set? So the different data sources that I'll be speaking to tonight focus around the New York State Education Department's District Report Card, the community cafe sessions that we've offered throughout the course of this school year. That's something that's been a little bit new for us, but it's been great to see so many of you joining us at those sessions. So far, we've held community cafes on health, safety, and security. We've focused a session on diversity, equity, and inclusion, funding the future and building, sorry, funding improvements and building the future, it gets me every time, project-based learning experiences. And then we have our upcoming cafe focused on wellness for the mind and body on May 8th. So if you're available to join us that night, please do. And where we'll probably spend the most time in tonight's presentation is talking about the data that's available on our interactive district report card, which is right on our district's website. I update that information at minimum quarterly, so we just finished marking period three. Can't believe we're in marking period four already. So, again, that's where we will go throughout the presentation tonight. So the first priority area that aligns with one of our goals this year is exemplifying cultural responsiveness, diversity, and equity. We felt as though it was important that we worked together to create an environment where all students, staff, and families feel a sense of belonging. So if you remember in the presentations from our secondary and elementary principals, they all planned to conduct a thought exchange with students, and some have even extended that to families, to get a sense of how do our students and our families, and also our staff feel when it comes to having that sense of belonging? And if I could take the data from all eight of those surveys and dump it into one, I would say the biggest word that continues to come up is "people," and the profound impact that people have on our students' day-to-day experiences in school, whether it was specific people or just people in general. If I were to make a word cloud, that would certainly be the word that stands out. So to get into some of the measures that we identified beyond some of those surveys, you'll notice that throughout these different goals, focusing on continuous improvement is something that is in each of our various measures. So, the measures for this goal really focused on that continuous improvement, particularly when examining proportionality across student subgroups in an effort to ensure educational equity. So the first data point to mention this evening surrounds our grade three through five instrument participation. If you recall, this is our first school year that we've purchased instruments for students in either orchestra or in band. Orchestra is available to students beginning in third grade, band begins in fourth grade, and then they have access to both following that. But following the introduction of that program, most markedly is just the participation that we've seen this year. Having about 70% of an entire grade level participating in our music programs is significant. We saw jumps of, you know, 13, 16% in those areas compared to last school year, and really the biggest difference has been offering those instruments at no cost to families. So while we know there's always room to grow and improve, and we knew going into it that we weren't gonna have every single instrument show up on our doorstep right away, that, again, the improvement that we've seen in participation has been significant, and we look forward to being able to continue that program. So I just wanted to highlight those participation numbers first. Secondly, I would like to highlight our student attendance. So, the students have been present 93% of days this year, which is a great number to keep in mind and hit. It has certainly fluctuated a little bit, a percentage point or two since the beginning of the year, which is very common. But this data is also showcased on our district's report card. There is an entire page that I'll point out to you that's dedicated to attendance. So while the graphic that you see here about students being present, 93% of days is also viewable on our district's report card. What I wanted to also point out are our chronic absenteeism numbers. So what you see over here on the right corner, we have 51.5% of students who don't currently show that they are at risk of being chronically absent this school year, which just for context, last school year, at the end of the third marking period, we have 45.9% of students at no risk. So to see that number go up, that's a good thing, because we have more students who are identified as not having that risk of becoming chronically absent. Students who are at risk of becoming chronically absent have been absent 5% to 9% of the days that they've been enrolled, and students who are chronically absent have missed 10% or more of days that they've been enrolled. So, similar to how we saw this number of students without that risk of becoming chronically absent change, we also saw the change in our population of students at risk, or those who've been identified as chronically absent. So just for comparison, this time of year, last year, 20% of kids were chronically absent, currently 17.3.
So can we ask questions?
Please do.
So, I assume you break that down into grade levels, because I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's more at risk if you're in high school to be chronically absent than if you're in an elementary, maybe?
In terms of falling into these risk categories, the grade isn't taken into consideration, but what we do find is that some grades have more students absent than others, or different groups of students can be more absent than others. And so, what you'll notice if you go to the interactive report card is just that it's interactive. So if there's ever a time that you want to dive deeper into the data that's presented here, you can easily select one of those subgroups, for example. You can easily select a grade level, and I'll just select our economically disadvantaged subgroup as an example. But you can see that the percent of students not at risk for being chronically absent dropped. It dropped from 51% to 40%, and students who are chronically absent, 29.2% of that subgroup compared to 17% when we were looking at all students. So, when we're looking for that educational equity, we're wanting to ensure that students across all demographic groups are provided those educat- we're wanting to ensure that students across all demographic groups are provided those educational experiences in an equitable way. And that's a data point that we would use as an example of something that we look at.
Can I ask you a really unfair question?
Sure.
So we switched the school lunch program sometime mid-year-ish. And we have to pick the economically disadvantaged category here. Too small timeframe, I understand. But is there anything in the data that we collected along that 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 number, the chronic absentee number may have shifted around the time that we changed the school lunch program?
It's a great question and thank you for asking it. I would want to dive into that data a little bit more deeply to take a look at that potential correlation for sure. So thank you for asking the question. I don't have the answer sitting here though.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Did you notice overall numbers of chronic absenteeism after COVID be particularly high? Cause kids have been home and then have they been coming down every year since then?
So it was actually the opposite. After COVID or following COVID, we saw attendance improve. And I will be the first to admit that during COVID, attendance got super tricky for districts because now students are home, you know, behind their computer. What's considered being present in attendance? Is it that you were present when, you know, the bell rang and you walked onto that meeting? Did you stay on that meeting? Was your camera off and you were there? Were you not there? All of those questions, you know, kind of came to the forefront, I think, during COVID. But as far as the students who we have in person over the last few years since then, we've seen some improvement in terms of student attendance for sure. Any other questions? So I just wanted to highlight again that, that attendance component. And you can certainly visit the interactive report card and play around a little bit more. But the other piece that I wanted to highlight is also on our district report card page, but it's in reference to equity in our activities. Whether they're offered before school or after school, whether they're part of our athletics program, part of our fine arts program, et cetera. So the, the numbers that you see on that, that front page of the goal for this report, we've seen some increases in participation. So we jumped actually about 5% since last year of students participating in activities. So that's the kind of great indicator to see when it comes to students being connected to our schools and to the work that we do here. But to dive a little bit deeper, to kind of speak to that point of educational equity a little bit further, I was so happy to hear Dr. Cook mention the esports and the Lego League. I made note of that when he was talking because I was going to highlight some of that in regards to this chart. But on the right side of that chart, you see what we would typically look at when we're looking for proportionality. And so just briefly, we would be looking to see, is our district population, which we currently have about 14, 15% of students who receive special education services, proportionate to the percentage of students that we see? I just use chronic absenteeism as one example. Here's an example of our students who receive special education services participating in our activities before and after school. So in that proportionate world, we would see about 15% of our students with disabilities participating in those activities. We currently see only about 7% participating. Having said that, although we know that's about half, right? That it's not proportionate, that number, that 7% has grown. And so the chart that we're looking at here is based off of the last school year. So we conduct an equity audit at the end of each school year. The equity audits that we've conducted in the past are posted on that district report card website. But those are numbers that I'm always keeping an eye on in terms of, again, looking for that educational equity. So you can always visit our equity audits that are posted online. But what I wanted to highlight, especially in regard to what Dr. Cook had mentioned, this is just a different data view than the charts that I just showed you. But this is the 15% of students who receive special education supports. This is the 85% of those who do not. But if I were to draw that line going all the way down, all of these different charts, the areas that we see the most students with disabilities participate in are technology-related, are social-emotional learning-related. In this case, math-related. That was our, one of the things that we had in there was math league, which since then, I'm always trying to improve how we're grouping things. So that's now grouped with STEM. But again, the point there is that we want to ensure educational equity and we want to ensure that students with a variety of backgrounds and experiences are receiving those equitable experiences. And so while it's one thing to take a look at the data in this view and looking at the whole, we're also looking at that data broken down into the different categories, if you will, of these different activities that we offer. So the equity audit is just an example of another place that that data gets housed and another example of some of the data that's available right on our district's website through that district report card. The other place that I'll just show you for this school year is this is our current activity involvement. So that chart we were just looking at was from last year. The report card got a much-needed refresh and update this year. But you can just kind of take a look at the different areas that, that students are involved in. So this number down here is the total students involved in athletics. The total students involved in, you know, summer programming experiences. So similar to the attendance page, you can also filter down by grade level. You can filter down by specific buildings and these charts will change depending on the group you selected. So I think I just selected third grade. I did. And you can tell third graders don't participate in our athletics programs just yet. But you see mostly those elementary clubs that are offered either before or after the school day, that it just filtered based on what I selected here. So again, you can play around with this forever and ever. But I'm here to just kind of give that overview or point you in the right direction if it's something that you want to look at further. Are there any other questions about goal 1A that focus on feeling a sense of belonging?
Yeah, I, so yeah, so first off, really super.
Thank you.
The question I have was maybe focused on the surveys that you did in terms of feeling of belonging. And what I'm wondering is, so we know that you probably got a lot of responses. We talked about the importance of people.
People came right out.
What I'm wondering though is, did you get any responses from folks that don't feel like they belong?
Sure.
And so, and so I'm curious about that. And not only the collecting of the data, but as a, as a school district, are we, are there structures in place to address the points that are brought forward by folks that are like, no, I really don't feel like I'm.
Absolutely. I don't know, Dr. DeBarber, did you want to comment on that before I did?
So certainly we have our S E I, Social Emotional Learning Committee that does a lot of work. But even within that, the school counselors, our social workers, our building level leadership teams are working. So they're the ones that actually put together these thought exchanges that were administered to the students. So they have like a team that ultimately goes through that information. A lot of it is also tied to the bias data that we get. And so they're quote unquote triaging these situations that come up based on student responses. So they're working with the students that are identified in there. And if there's, you know, larger areas that need to be addressed, and I'm trying to think of an example off the top of my head, those teams are creating professional development and supports that are ultimately going to help support the students so that they feel more connected. I will say, and I don't think Danielle is going to talk about this, but we were having a conversation earlier about discipline in comparison to last year. And I think, you know, we're starting to see improvement in even that area as well. And I think that ties to if students feel connected and they have that sense of belonging in school, they're not going to disrupt and create, you know, issues within the school setting. So they're feeling that sense of connection. And to see significantly what the drop has been, if I take the most severe discipline issue with a superintendent's hearing and a long-term suspension from school, it is significantly less than it was the last two years. And I think that speaks to the fact that there's a lot more cohesion with all of the things that we're doing. Not only kids can see the connections, but you know, I think the adults that are working with them can as well.
Thank you.
And I'll just speak on the discipline side. One of the big things that came up in our survey of Baker students was vaping. And so I know the Baker administration has taken that very seriously and has taken measures to try to curb some of that. But yeah, that was something that we heard loud and clear from our Baker students. I would say on the elementary side, it was much more on the people. And the people who make our students feel like they belong and they were very upfront in naming their teachers, naming their principals, naming those people who they can't wait to come to school and see every day. So while the people's side has that side to it, I think the people's side also has that side of, wow, it's really hard for me when, you know, other students are vaping in the bathroom, for example. I don't want to use the bathroom because of that. Were some of the comments that came out of it that therefore had some of those actions taken by administration. So yeah, absolutely. So just to continue, goal 1B focused on providing project-based learning experiences for students. Preparing students to be knowledgeable, critical thinkers, communicators, collaborators, creators and contributors is the goal for that. So I know that graduation rates were just a huge news feature recently and we certainly had a lot to celebrate in terms of our graduation, right? But the, the data that surrounds that, I also included the assessment trends we've seen pre-COVID and post-COVID. So in many of our data sets, we see that gap. Oh, what happened there? COVID happened there. But it kind of gives that defining space of everything that happened pre-COVID and where we're at post-COVID. So we did a presentation for the board, not this past January, but the January previous, that we took a pretty deep dive into Regents exam trends and 3-3-8 assessment trends. Since that presentation, not a lot has changed with our district's data. But I will share, you know, in terms of the state and in terms of accountability, based on those results, based on our chronic absenteeism numbers and that graduation rate, we are identified as a district for local support and improvement, which previously was known as being in good standing in the eyes of the state education department. So that's a huge celebration for our district to be in good standing. And that's certainly something that we want to maintain. When we see some fluctuations in these scores, I will just point out that as we presented on previously, shifts in standards taught, shifts in assessed questions or knowledge have really resulted in those shifts in performance. So the test that we administered in the 22, 23 school year for grades three through eight, for example, we didn't assess science because that assessment is now shifting to grade five for the first time this year. Or just the fact that our ELA and math state assessments for the first time were based off of a different set of standards. While students still received instruction in those standards, the assessment was different than what had been assessed in the past. So often when we see fluctuations in those scores, it is tied to fluctuations in the standards taught and worthy assessments.
So that was an end-of-the-year score in 23? Is that, that test given the end of the year?
Uh, yes, the 3-3-8 assessments are coming up right after April break.
So when will we see the 24 data? Will that be available? I don't think so long.
It does take a while. It sounds like there's commitment to try to provide it sooner and sooner. So December-ish was the timeframe, if I remember correctly, Joe?
I mean, it's, we may get embargoed data by the end of the summer. We can't share it publicly, but it still allows our team of teachers and administrators to work through that and to do what they need to do to address any areas. We also get the item analysis and, you know, content-specific data and gaps that we can also look at, you know, where we'll list it as a region, not district by district, but.
And we actually received that data first, which is great. So we received the standards reinforced over the summer, which gives teachers time to reflect on that data. There's actually a graphic in our data bytes that shows the accountability data cycle and just kind of what different data points in terms of accountability are looked at. Thank you. Also, along with goal 1B, having that recent community cafe focused on problem-based learning or project-based learning was huge to compare the seven different core skill sets for graduating high school students to be effective in the work environment. So we worked with RMS to conduct some in-depth interviews with 12 local employers. And the employers were asked to indicate how strongly they felt these different skills were in terms of importance for when students enter the work environment. We asked our cafe participants to do the same. And so it was just interesting to see the correlation between some of those results. For example, strong communication skills, that was ranked highest by our participants, close to highest by those employers. We had some discussion about strong work ethic and what that means for our students. But we also saw maintaining a positive attitude, that we are pretty, you know, in alignment or in agreement with those employers that were interviewed. So the in-depth report to those interviews, as well as our recent community cafe, are posted on our strategic plan site. So I'll be sure to show that before we wrap up tonight.
Yep, we did get that report in Friday night too, which was quite interesting. It's the same thing for a second, but yes.
Can I just, what's the context where the students engaged that learning? And then they were interviewing with businesses? Is that?
So the interviews were conducted by RMS. So Mark Zangler moderated these in-depth interviews with the local employers one-on-one. So often it was like director of human resources that they were working with. Lou himself from Lou's Car Care and he actually came to the cafe. We heard loud and clear in those interviews, as well as in the cafe, that these employers want to partner with us. They're excited to know that this work is happening and they only want to continue to have these conversations, to continue to be a part of the work that the district's doing. So that was really, you know, encouraging to hear as well.
Can I add a little bit to that? So I happen to be in a participation in government class today. And so in preparation for Baker's job fair, career fair, the teacher and the co-teacher were talking to students about, actually, they're prepping them all week long. You know, how do you write to be professional email? How do you ask for time off if you want to go to your senior ball, but you're working that weekend? How do you request that time off in a professional manner? So they had lots of different scenarios for students to respond to. So we are working on some of those skills. When I look at this feedback that they want students to have strong communication skills, you know, those, those pieces are coming in, in some of our classrooms where teachers are taking advantage of that.
The last data point that I wanted to mention for goal 1. The last data point that I wanted to mention for Goal 1B is our universal screening assessment results. We administer the STAR assessment now for all students in grades K through nine. So if you might remember from the past, it been grades K and one, you would administer the Ames Web Assessment, but our results lived in two different platforms, which wasn't always the best housing of that, that data and those results. So for the first year, we have all students in grades K through nine on the same platform. But we can see again if our goal is continuous improvement in these areas or continuous improvement of the students who are at or above grade level expectations. This bottom line for the students who are appearing in that green bar, we can see, you know, some improvement compared to last year and compared to the year before when we look at that, that trend over time. Ideally, you want to only see like fifteen to twenty percent of students in this yellow and red range in need of intervention or urgent intervention. So we continue to monitor that with our teaching teams and our grade level teams. Those charts are also available on the district's report card in a similar way as what I've already showed you. You can interact with those charts. You can look at specific grade levels. You can look at specific benchmark windows. Benchmarks are given in the fall, winter, and spring. So a little different than that quarterly update. And then lastly, our efforts to increase school safety and security. We know that the goal is to increase school safety and security measures by supporting mental health opportunities and a learning environment that's safe and secure for students and staff. So our first cafe this year, back in October, focused on this topic. And when we looked at the themes of responses from participants, first, they overwhelmingly supported emergency response planning and communication, making sure that we had solid plans in place for a variety of scenarios. It continues to be of importance that we ensure that we have adequate staffing and mental health resources to support students and staff and that also we continue to make those infrastructure and physical building enhancements that we've seen with weapons detection systems, that we've seen with some of those other measures that have been put in place over time. So as we briefly mentioned or started to talk a little bit about, when we were looking at some of those disciplinary referral trends, overall, we're trending in a downward direction with about thirty-one hundred referrals for the year. It's slightly up from last year, but it is down from the year before, as you can see in the, in the graph there. Most notably, those elementary referrals, we're seeing more of this school year. But as an administrative team, we also went through a pretty intensive training during our summer retreats together. So we do feel like that was part of it. But as Dr. DeBarbury mentioned, when we look at some of those specific consequences or dispositions that are assigned for our disciplinary referrals, we've seen a significant drop in the superintendent hearing decisions that we're seeing. Again, trying to use some of those authoritative practices, trying to have those, those difficult conversations with students so that they understand how safety is of utmost importance, but also have them, you know, re-enter the educational setting in a, in a shorter time span than what maybe was done previously with the length of a suspension.
Just to emphasize a little bit more with why you see that increase with elementary. So what we were finding, just not to, you know, put anybody or throw anyone under the bus, but we found that there were, there were incidents that were happening that weren't being documented or they were being documented not necessarily in our student information system, which they needed to be in order to comply with DASA and other requirements. So if anything, that training that we did this summer really helped to solidify the administrative processes that we're utilizing so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. So it does look like there's an increase, but I would say that it's not an increase in behavior. If anything, I think, I really do feel like we're in a good place just across the district. And I don't know if things have just settled down and we're now into the point where we're more consistent. So, because I do think in years overall, we've seen, you know, a decrease in what one would consider to be severe.
And then the last data point that we're using to monitor, Goal Number Two, is our biomass data, which again, Dr. Cook had mentioned. We know that we've heard Carrie speak to the different trends that we've seen in our biomass data over time. Tonight, I'm only highlighting what we consider scores related to negative affect. And so negative affect behaviors include internalizing concerns related to symptoms of anxiety, depression, and withdrawal. As we've talked about before, when we look at trends over time, so these are year-to-year-to-year comparisons of our spring benchmarking data, we want to see that green grow, right? That grow the green protocol that we talk about often. Because when the green grows, we are stopping the spread of the red and mellowing that yellow. So what I wanted to point out here, we continue to see some differences between how teachers are rating students. So in grades K through six, the same questions are rated, but it's by teachers. During COVID, we started the student ratings in grades seven through twelve and just the students, and just the students rate themselves. We don't have teacher ratings for that. But you can see a considerable difference in the percentages of students who are not at risk as rated by the teachers compared to the, to the students themselves. So that's something that we continue to explore more as we continue to work on improving that consistency across areas. But over the course of time, we've also increased our mental health staffing or our partnerships with other community agencies. And so again, as Carrie has, has talked about before, when it comes to triaging students who are at an immediate risk of harm, those students are more connected with services now than what we might have seen when we first started the student reading skills. And so these skills are for a variety of questions that are all related to negative affect. So we'll continue to work on some of that data for you.
Is this mandatory? I mean, do all teachers fill this out? All seven, twelve students?
All, all teachers filled out in grades K through six. We do have students who opt out in grades seven through twelve, more so in grades ten through twelve than I think what we see in grades seven, eight, and nine.
So what's percentage of students?
Right, so it's probably about thirty percent. I think it's interesting because it's a people by grade level. And I think I talked a little bit about this in our update. Our older students are opting out more than our younger students. Following COVID, it was new for the older students. And so Maya's talked about this a little bit. Are you ready to?
Yeah.
She is.
Right, so when I was, I believe, eighth grade and had first been introduced. And at first it was, I don't want to say it wasn't honest, but it was a bit confusing at first. So one of the things that was brought forward when I had joined the Mental Wellness Committee is that students kind of had that trust that was broken in a sense. Some students weren't aware that it was being fully monitored. But there was, teachers and support staff were receiving those responses. So some students weren't very happy about that and that could contribute to them not giving as many responses. Also, some students, they just opt out or if they answer, they don't answer one hundred percent honestly because they either are concerned that, you know, maybe they don't have the support at home. Say if support staff were to pull them down and they see them at risk and they need to come back and adult. So, you know, there's students who, you know, they opt out or they don't answer. They just answer, you know, I'm doing great, I'm doing fine, and they may not be. So you can't force them to. It's just something that usually you want, it's something to work towards, towards and, you know, better build the support staff to make these students feel comfortable to come to, you know, the school.
So I think, you know, we're, we're learning from those experiences and we just felt post-COVID, it was really important to, to implement this assessment as quickly as possible. And so there was a lot of confusion, I think, for our student, secondary students, about confidentiality versus being anonymous. And so we've done a lot of work with our support staff at Baker specifically. And again, the student-led leadership team to work with our students, like, what does this mean? Why are we doing it? What do we have to do and why do we have to do it? Why do we have to contact your parents? And some of those situations, I think even students have come back and said, you know, these situations where I was really angry that I checked this box and then you talked to my parents, thank God you did, right? And so now those experiences leading forward are, I think, shifting the mindset. And for our seventh graders that switch to that self-assessment, this is all they know, is this less stigmatized conversation about mental health. And we're checking, I mean, because we care if you're okay and how you feel. We want it, we don't just want to know about your reading, writing, and math skills. We want to know how you feel. Do you feel connected? Do you have a person at school, like, who? We talk about that, where you ask that question. Who are the students that don't have a person? This helps us figure that out. And so those are the pieces, you know, I think, with all of this data, we talk about those small percentages, albeit small, are so important. That second percent of students, like, kids that are not connected, are not participating, that intersectionality piece is the most important because oftentimes those are also kids that are at risk for other reasons. They're also economically disadvantaged. So when those, those risk factors sort of pile up, that's the, those are the students that are being suspended. Those are the students that are chronically absent. And who's their role person? So I think all of these things together help us figure out how to move forward the best that we can for all of our students, not just those ninety-six percent that are doing well.
I think that is all of that we had for this update. Are there any other additional questions or thoughts and ideas for future workshops or work sessions on data that we can maybe put out there so that we can utilize for future planning?
Yes, I'm so glad you asked that. So first of all, I absolutely love this, Danielle. You put so much work into this. This is absolutely amazing. And I love the, love how it's organized and that you can drill down to the details if you wanted, if you have additional questions. You had sent something in a Friday letter related to students with disabilities and it sounds like we had some worries, but we also were making some great gains in some areas. And I wondered if we could have a presentation on those data and, you know, what we're doing and how the board can be supportive.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just have one quick question, just a technical thing. The universal screening assessments that the Barbara and the, I think this, these are STAR results? So the, the green indicators, the key says at or above, at or above?
At or above grade level expectation. So they fall above the forty percentile rank when compared nationally. These are norm assessments, which is a hopeful data set to have.
Well, thank you, and very impressive, it is impressive. First, we look forward to, of course, actions that you address. You gotta, you gotta have the data first and then you can do the action. Thank you. So I guess with that, we're ready to adjourn at this point. But thank you. So we'll adjourn from our work session and we will be later with our special meeting, but we have the tenure reception at this point. So thank you very much.
Thank you.